The Penland Pike Crossing, again, they thought it was a good project to pursue. They asked that we continue to work with the county staff on the particular location of where that would be and other potential pedestrian improvements in the area and pursue grant funding at a later time, either with the county's programs or PennDOT DCD programs as well. So in order to pursue the current open round of Monco 2040 implementation grant program for the Dega Road Crossing, one of the requirements of the grant application, which is due on March 1st, is for the board to pass a resolution authorizing the submission of the grant application to the County Planning Commission, and that's what you have before you this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions for our traffic engineer? From the supervisors? Now, is there any questions or comments from any member of the audience concerning what our traffic engineer just described?
Yes, I got Nathan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm on the Dega Road Crossing pretty often, and I wanted to express my support specifically for that crossing.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any more questions?
What is the timing of this process? The submission is in March, and then how long before we would hear something?
Yeah, the applications are due on March 1st typically, and this is a normal cycle that they do on an annual basis, where the applications are due on March 1st, and then they typically make selections for award in June. So looking at about a three, three month turnaround after the submission of the application to find out whether you were successful or not.
And about how long if, after that, if we're successful, that the project might be able to begin?
Yeah, the preliminary schedule that we're going to be submitting with the application are about one year timeframe to complete permitting, even though your road is a lower Guinnett Township maintained road, the flashing beacon device does have to be approved by PennDOT, have to go through that process with them of getting it permitted. So then we would advertise it for construction and then for the construction to be completed, all total, we're looking at about 12 months. It might seem like a little bit of a long time considering the scope of improvements. There's a couple of things that factor into that. One is on these smaller scope projects, you have to be a little strategic with your bidding sometimes to get good prices from contractors, timing of when you put out, put things out to bid for these projects sometimes affects that. And then we're finding with our traffic signal projects or flashing beacon type projects with it like this right now is there's a very long lead time on getting steel posts and mast arms after you bid the project out. So that contributes to a little bit longer timeframe for construction to be completed as well. So if you get the award, everything goes well, you could be looking at, you know, spring of next year potentially to have the project complete.
Okay, thank you. Tessie, that was going to be my question, you beat me to it.
Yeah, same, great minds think alike.
It does, it takes a PhD to beat me. Okay, all right. Since there's no other questions or discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Nathan, your hand is still up, is that just from the last time, or you have another?
Oh, I think I need to turn that off, but thanks for checking that.
Okay, I can get rid of that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, can I, can I have a motion for resolution number 2021-05?
I'm moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. Next up is a authorization to accept McMahon's proposal to begin to a Keene Road Traffic Study. Okay, so Chad, I think you're up again.
This proposal here goes, goes back a little bit of time. It was first discussed, I believe, in the summer or fall of 2019, when the MRA project was before the board for preliminary land development approval. And it was really the outcome of a lot of citizen input and resident input for the neighborhoods along McKean Road and the desire to work with the stakeholders along the McKean Road corridor, being MRA, Janson and the YMCA and the neighborhoods, to come up with a comprehensive plan to improve safety and try and calm speeds for the amount of traffic that's experienced along McKean Road. So it would be a collaborative process with, with all those key stakeholders, where we look at a menu of options to improve the safety and calm traffic speeds, looking at anything from low, lower cost items such as permanent speed display signs, mid-block pedestrian crossings, similar to the one we just talked about for Dega Road, improvements to pavement markings and signings and, and those type of strategies to more larger scope type of improvements like landscape medians and other physical traffic calming devices, and also looking at the intersections along McKean Road, at the MRA driveway, and then also the, the YMCA and Janson driveways to come up with solutions to better handle traffic at those intersections because they generate a high volume of traffic on McKean Road. So to accommodate those traffic volumes while also calming traffic speeds and improving safety in the corridor. So the end, the end product at the end of the study would be to develop conceptual plans for the various types of improvements for the intersections that I mentioned, and then also corridor wide conceptual traffic calm plan along with cost estimates. And then the study can be used in a couple of different ways. One, it will be a guide for the township as further land development proposals may come before the board in the future along the corridor, working with those helpers to implement the recommended improvements, and also to pursue potential grant opportunities as well, whether it be through Montgomery County, PennDOT DCD, other sources to try and implement the improvements. So that's, that's a quick summary of the proposal and, and the purpose behind the study.
Okay, Chad, if, if we vote to approve this, when could you start?
McMahon started.
Immediately? And when would you think you would be complete?
I think we lay out, the preliminary schedule we laid out in the proposal was we would go out and do some additional field work and data collection that would be in addition to data collection that's already been done in the past. We would present an initial plan and improvement options approximately 10 weeks in the time we're able to complete our, our data collection and field work. So approximately two, two to three months out from when we would receive authorization was when, is when we would have some of our initial findings to, to review.
At which point you would start your series of meetings?
Correct.
Right.
But does it make sense for us to start now, knowing that conditions aren't consistent with pre-COVID conditions? Would you not want to wait till we're more aligned with the typical traffic pattern to begin?
Typically, we would, however, we're fortunate in the fact that the traffic counts that we would need to complete this study were already conducted by MRA as part of their land development application in 2019, and then also Janson as part of their recent parking project that was before the township. So the traffic counts that they completed for their projects, we would take those and make some minor adjustments to, to factor in some growth over the, since that time, and that falls in line with normal practices that we would follow if there were no COVID circumstances. You know, typically, our, our best practices is that if there's been counts completed within the last two-year timeframe, they're acceptable to, to adjust and, and use for other studies as well.
Do you think that there's any merit to, I guess, even the changes that are happening with NSHIP aren't totally complete as it relates to what they were approved for? So is that a good, is 2019 as part of their traffic study an accurate depiction of what it's going to look like moving forward?
For MRA?
Yes.
I mean, we can, we can assume, all we can do is assume what, what was part of that land development proposal and what they assumed for a full build out of the site at that time. You know, if something happens to five years down the road, we would always have the ability to go back and update the study as needed, which I think would be what you would want to do anyway. We certainly wouldn't want to complete the study and then it'd just be a static document for, for 10 or 20 years.
But that if separated into this proposal, I mean, my concern is this is a significant amount of money that we're investing into a study during kind of uncertain times with not a clear vision as far as what the MRA build out will look like. So will it be applicable post-COVID and, and will it be applicable, you know, six, seven, eight years from now? Because of the amount of money that we're going to be expending, I would want assurance that if there is changes, that would be built into the cost.
You mean into the, the initial cost of proposal here?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, we could certainly go back and amend the proposal to take into account periodic updates. The other way to view this as well is this is, this is a preliminary, I'll say, planning level conceptual type effort. If any of the recommended improvements that result from the study were to be implemented in the future as part of the engineering and permitting process, the traffic counts and those type of things would be updated as well at that time to ensure, you know, that, that those projects are being designed and constructed to take into account what the, what the circumstances are at that time, so.
So it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be double billed if you have to go back and get, get a new traffic count, is what you're saying, based upon a proposal that we decided to act upon?
Well, you, you may have to do new traffic counts just to verify things like lane lengths or traffic signal timings. You may have to do some updated data collection.
That's not included in this proposal, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So this proposal is to, to do a study based upon how things are right now and to evaluate how things are right now, knowing that we're not in a typical traffic world?
Hey Chad, can I jump in real quick to add? Danielle, hi, I'm Casey, I haven't met you yet. I'm with McMahon Associates, also a township resident. Yeah, your concerns are valid ones, and this is really a planning level study in the fact that, number one, the data that's going to be used is pre-COVID data, number one. So it's going to be data based on higher traffic volumes, and who knows if traffic volumes in this world are ever going to come back to what they were, let alone get worse. So we're going to start with relatively a pretty conservative case of, of numbers. We are going to have to double check that with data that's available. I think we mentioned it in here called streetlight data that we can confirm what COVID conditions are. We can strike that balance, and, and the overall condition is the big cost of this is putting together to produce, producing the, the concepts and the plans that we'll be producing. The data collection is a real minor cost item in the whole scheme of the thing. It's really coming up with the conceptual plans and, and holding the meetings and putting the actual product together. So the bulk of the work will have been done through those things, and if, and if things post-COVID return to more normal levels, or there's a rezoning of the property, or something happens that we can't account for, we'll take that into account at that time. And I don't think that there are going to be major tweaks to what we're going to come up with, but there'll be subtleties, and, and, and that'll get worked through the process. Hopefully, if something moves forward and there's grant money to start to implement one of these things, as Chad said, that'll all bear the cost of any changes later down the road.
No, I get, I understand the baseline data, and I understand what, what the, what the major goal is. I guess my concern is that, especially as it relates to the Ambler YMCA and the concerns of the constituents that live and the residents that live on McKean Road, they grossly underestimated, I guess, how much traffic they were accounting for on McKean Road. And as they move forward, that gross underestimate kind of came into play when ship and MRI were revisited. So I want to ensure that we're looking at it truly inaccurately as it relates to what the real traffic pattern is, when we take it into consideration, any recommendations for a master plan as to what it would look like and what traffic calming, you know, recommendations you guys are coming up with? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and, and we'll be doing exactly that. Like I said, the, the pre-COVID traffic conditions we have, and then any, anything that's new or forecasted to be new, or any additions to those properties, whether it's Janson or the MRI driveway, those things will be forecasted and, and projected into the volumes and stuff that we use. That is not atypical of any traffic study that we would do for any new development that's out there.
So the, the plan that you come up with, just, you know, as a wild guess, could also accommodate one and a half times the volume of traffic, for example, and, and it wouldn't negatively impact the plan?
That's correct, because we have to forecast to a certain future year for traffic. So yes, that's, that's what we're going to be going for. We're not going to be designing the Taj Mahal either and, you know, have like a five-lane road either. We're trying to calm traffic on that road.
You're planning for 2027, is that accurate? Did I read that accurately?
Yeah, that was, and we can adjust that projected year. That was, that was in the horizon year we initially talked about when we first started talking about this project almost a couple of years now. So we'll, we'll use a horizon year that we feel is most appropriate at this time. We're not tied to that 2027 year.
And as that relates to MRA, Spring House Innovation Park, that is full build out by right, plus the approvals they got for, for the conference center, restaurant, hotel, et cetera.
Correct.
Yeah.
So how could you, that, that's really kind of what I, the crux of what I'm talking about, it's not fully built out yet. You're using an algorithm that you think would accurately depict what that traffic could and would be based upon what they were approved for?
Correct, we, we would estimate the amount of trips based on what the build out of the site is, and that's, that's algorithms and equations that we would normally use for traffic studies based on the types of land uses for the build out. And so it's, it's normal practice to do projections to get out to that horizon year, to assume a full build out of a site, and we feel we can accurately project what that would be based on the information that's available for, for the MRA build out.
So let me get back to my original question and what I want to assure doesn't happen. I know that this predates me, but they did those projections for the Ambler YMCA, they grossly underestimated those projections, and I don't know if it was you or the previous traffic engineer. What assurances are you going to give us that that gross estimation will not happen with this?
Well, really, when it comes to MRA, the, the only way could, to change significantly would be if the land uses that are proposed for that site would change significantly. And that would, if that would ever happen, that would require rezonings, all other types of things that would have to come before the, before the board for approval. And if that were to ever happen, you know, we could make a requirement of their approval process that they, they amend the McKean Road Traffic Calming Study to account for the changes, significant changes in their site and, and how that would impact the results that would come out of, out of this initial study. So that's not overlooked.
Is it a fair statement to say that if MRA did fully build out by right on top of the other special uses that they got, that that is a more severe impact as far as traffic volume than what they would propose with a residential component and not the full build out? Or is that just too, too much of a generalization to even?
Yeah, that's pretty general.
Comment on, yeah.
If I may?
The residential would depend a lot on the density.
Yeah.
Well, they were, they were proposing, I think, 120 homes. That was part of the earlier discussions, we could probably revisit that another time and look at that separately, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Brand.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Chad for bringing the intern along with him, who was, we go back 30 years maybe or longer, and Mr. Executive from McMahon, very honored to have you join us tonight, this meeting, because we go way back, and some of my fellow, I know my fellow supervisors aren't aware of your expertise and how high up you are in McMahon. And to join us tonight, I thank you for doing that.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Casey, it's great to see you. I haven't seen you in a while, and, and I did not know you moved into the famous Lower Guinnett Township, and we go back when you were in Whip pane and, and over that way, and you used to hightail it through Dega Road, and we could give you a lot of tickets for all the traversing that you did every morning, but we didn't. But let's get back to this issue. It was brought up about the YMCA and the counts, and I just wanted to, to mention to my fellow supervisors that back in the 90s, when the YMCA came to us about this site, it was the only site in Lower Guinnett that was possibly going to accommodate the Y. We had the president of Roman Haze, who was also, I should say, the plant manager of Roman Haze, which was the president of the board of the YMCA, and he was very helpful in getting that site. And one, our traffic people, and I think it was McMahon at the time, we went to the YMCA to give us an anticipation of the number of members increased, they anticipated, I think they had 7,000, they told us 12,000 to 14,000 would be the total. Of course, now it's probably 25,000 to 30,000. So it's, it, that's one thing about getting information from different companies. MRA, God knows, and of course, the main entrance there is going to be Norristown Road, but McKean, you have to feel for the neighbors, the transition of that quiet road, and now it's what it is. And so this proposal, an authorization to accept McMahon's proposal is something that has to be done, and, and I know with the expertise that McMahon has nationwide, that they have, they have the ability to draw from similar projects along the East Coast that they've, they've been hired previously for. So I'm definitely in favor, I'm sure the, the board is also, but I, I know Danielle's concerns are truly ours also, because, and I think between Chad and Casey, you did enumerate the fact that a lot of these Janson numbers, MRA numbers were before pre-COVID, and like Casey said, God knows what the traffic patterns are going to be in the future, especially with a lot of these companies going to keep people working at home and using Zoom rather than sending them into an office and paying for the high rent of an office. So I just wanted to make my comments, especially about Mr. Moore and Chad breaking in his assistant, and also make the comments about trying to anticipate traffic counts, it's rather difficult with the changing companies like Janson, MRA in the future. I think the Y's probably maxed out as compared to what they had given us back in the 90s. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Do any other supervisors have any questions?
I have. Go ahead, Danielle.
I just want to know, are all participants along McKean Road, Janson, Ship, and the Ambler Area YMCA, were, are they going to be involved and willing? I know we can't compel them to participate, but have they expressed willingness to participate?
Yeah, they've all, they've all agreed to participate in the development of the study itself, and MRA and Janson has also offered to contribute financially to cover the cost of, of the fee that's in our proposal to complete the work.
Yeah, could you elaborate on that, Chad? I wasn't aware that MRA offered.
Yeah, we had, we had a meeting back in August of 2019 that sat down with the stakeholders, YMCA, MRA, and J&amp;J, and we'll say, we have confirmed that they would contribute $15,000 as part of the study. The YMCA has not committed that at this point. Now, some of that has, came through conditions on different developments that came in for both MRA and, and Janson, but we have them with a commitment of $15,000 each.
Janson confirmed that with their land, land development approval for the parking garage, right?
Correct, that was part of the conditions for, for their traffic improvements.
So that's not in the proposal, it predates me and Tessie. Can you just tell me what is the contribution from the township?
Well, we looked at it, originally, we were looking at a $60,000 study, which would have been $15,000 each, including the YMCA and the township. So this proposal is 45.9, so our, Matt, or our portion would be 15,900.
With Janson and MRA or Ship covering the rest?
Correct.
So the YMCA has not agreed to participate?
They have not.
I think they've said no.
They were at the, correct, they were at the meeting, they just had, they were not prepared to commit anything at the time, and we have not heard from them since we reached out, but they were closed down for a while and so forth. We can reach back out to them, but.
So my question is, should we be voting on this proposal today where it does not indicate the, the cooperation of Janson and Ship or MRA as far as what they will be contributing? Because it, it has us agreeing to 45.9.
I would agree, Danielle. I, I didn't realize that this was going to be split cause.
I would agree, Danielle. I I didn't realize that this was going to be split costs.
Well, this would be a reimbursement from them. We would they would work with us during the time and they would reimburse us at the end.
So we have documentation of that through their land development agreements that they that were approved?
We do.
And that's that's two out of the three, isn't it?
We can also, it does not say it would be a reimbursement in their in their plan, so we could get it upfront if everyone is entitled and wishes.
I think we should get something in writing from and we will admit, we may have it with minutes from M R A and Janson.
I would like that to be incorporated some in some way before we agree, because I was going to ask for us to suspend and not vote on this based upon the forty-five nine and me not understanding if this is a good idea, under with the knowledge of that we're dealing with COVID and totally different traffic patterns. We have no idea what it's going to look like when we return to whatever that typical traffic pattern will be post COVID. But if there's two other groups that are going to contribute, it seems a little bit more reasonable, but it also seems reasonable to make a more concerted effort to reach out to the Ambler Y M C A with the knowledge that they had a very significant impact on the residents of McKean Road and all the all the other roads off of McKean as far as what their day-to-day traffic existence is.
As as you said, many of the residents along McKean Road and the developments along McKean Road point at the Y M C A for the increase of traffic and not not really M R A, well, not M R A yet and J and J.
So being the major contributor to the increased traffic and I I think it's life-altering traffic as it relates to rush hours in the in the morning and evening. I'm not sure what they're experiencing right now. I'm not sure how many people are going to the Y M C A with different shutdowns and and that kind of thing with gyms closing. But I think that that gives us the time to to ensure that at least give a concerted effort to see if the Ambler Y M C A would be willing to sit down and contribute based upon what we know took place and the gross underestimate, underestimation of the amount of traffic that they were going to draw. Before we agree to this, because I, you know, I think that they need to be a community partner as they've been.
Would you not approve the proposal if we do not get the acquiescence from the Y M C A? I think this is something that we've talked about over the course of many, many months, and our residents expect this. And I I think it's a definitely uber-worthy project, regardless of what kind of contribution we can get.
Absolutely. I absolutely think we need to approve it and to to move forward with it. I just want to have all stakeholders to be active stakeholders and community partners as we move forward to addressing the issue.
Sorry, Tessie, you can have.
Well, I was just going to say, I understand your concern that the, you know, we're in the time of COVID and maybe traffic conditions will never go back to where they were, but I would not want to delay this trying to understand what that new traffic pattern will be, because we don't know when that might happen, you know, it it might be a year, it might be five years. So I I would like to go ahead and move forward, and I I would even suggest we move forward without necessarily having the Y M C A, although I think we do need, we owe it to everyone to to pursue their buy-in and their participation. But I I would like to move forward with this.
I agree, Tessie. I just was, I wanted clarification as far as the cost.
Yeah, no, I like that you asked that because I didn't recognize that was going to happen.
But I also am sure that if if we come back with architectural design changes and the Y M C A is not on board as far as, you know, their willingness to participate and and be open to those changes.
I can I make a suggestion?
I make just one clarification on the on the Y M C A in terms of their participation. That they made a distinction when we did have the discussions with them. They were more than willing to participate in the meetings and the development of the recommendations and the study. It was the financial piece that they weren't willing to commit to at that time. So you know, I think in that meeting we had with them back in August of two thousand nineteen, they were they were very interested in being actively active participants in the development of the study. It was just the financial piece of it that they weren't willing to commit to.
And they're probably going to be even more hesitant now.
Go ahead, Mr. Brand.
I'd like to, the staff, Craig, mention that M R A and Janson have verbalized to us to participate. So we have two out of the three in reference to the Y, I think, between the staff and set to set up a subcommittee meeting with two supervisors with the management of Lower Gwinnett and also McMahon participate and set up a special meeting with the Y and lay this out to them. But I agree with Tessie and also my other fellow supervisors to proceed with this approval with the subheading to the approval of being, getting action as a group to address the Y and also to confirm something in writing from the other two participants, M R A and Janson.
That was going to be my only other suggestion, Mr. Brand. I appreciate you articulating that. Just to ensure that we do have a meeting with them, I don't think we should delay it necessarily, especially if they they believe in the actual project, maybe just not are able, you know, aren't able to contribute financially. But can we have something in writing from the the two that did agree from Janson?
Yes.
We have we have that already.
We have that, right.
We have that.
It's not verbal. It's part of the land agreement. Is that what you're saying?
It's their agreement. Yeah.
All right, great.
And I'll circulate that to everyone.
And I apologize, this meeting apparently in August predates me and Tessie, so I did not have access or awareness to what was and wasn't agreed upon.
Right.
I can circulate that and I can reach out to the Y M C A again. The last time they were all closed down, they were not committing any funds and then they cut some staff and so forth. So they weren't they weren't ready to shell out any money. So I don't know what their situation is currently, but I can find out.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Kathy.
If I may. So Chad, the fifth item under your scope of services, you made a note that an origin destination study following license plates or Bluetooth devices has not been a scope of at this time, but could be performed as a supplemental, as a supplemental fee to the proposal. What exactly is that type of study and why might we consider it?
It's a, it's one methodology of doing what's called an important destination study and trying to determine the amount of traffic that's being generated from the immediate area or whether it's traffic just passing through a particular area from outside the study area. License plate surveys are one way to do it. It's a very staff-intensive and expensive way to determine or estimate origins and destinations from a particular study area. We feel confident in the traffic volume data that's available from each of the major developments along McKean Road and also our ability to estimate the amount of traffic that's generated by the residential neighborhoods with access to McKean Road. We feel confident in being able to come up with a a good estimate of how much we'll call pass-through or cut-through traffic is on McKean Road from the outside.
Okay, so you just informed us of this in terms of full transparency. There's another tool in your toolbox, but you don't feel that there's much value to be added by it, especially given the expects.
I would I would like to know what's the expense?
To do the license plate survey, we actually have to station staff out in the field with clipboards, actually write down license plate numbers for vehicles that pass through intersections. We then take that license plate data and obtain addresses for them to determine, to help try and estimate where that traffic is coming from.
No, I understood what the process is. What's the expense?
We didn't calculate what the expense was to do that. If you want an estimate for what that costs, we could certainly provide it.
And I guess over what period of time would you be, would you do that? It wouldn't be throughout the study, so I'm trying to figure out like a week, two weeks, is that, what is the snapshot? And it's not automated in any way. It's not video camera or?
Correct. We would typically stick, it would depend on what days of the week you would want to evaluate. If we just wanted to look at the weekday, we would just do have the staff out there and record the license plates during the the peak travel periods on a typical day. If there was a situation where you wanted to look at what weekend traffic was, you know, that'd be additional days and expense.
So once you have that fee, you can come back to us and we could add that on if it was necessary?
Sure.
All right. With that said, I'd like to make a motion that we.
Well, I'd like to, hold on, Ed, hold on. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on this?
I am not saying anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, can I have a, can I have a motion to approve the the study?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the acceptance of McMahon's appro- proposal with the the added suggestions of incorporating the three partners, M R A, Janson, and make a serious effort with the Y M C A. That's in form of a motion and I'm, I would appreciate a second and a an approval.
I'll second.
Yeah, okay, just want a point of order here. So we've already got two of the parties. What I understood you were saying previously, Ed, was a was a meeting with two of the supervisors in Township Management and Staff with the Y M C A. Yeah, so so we can approach them that way. Yes.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Next up is authorization to upgrade the fuel management system at Public Works Garage. Fred.
Yeah, this was something that started before I was here. Mike DiStefano had looked into this. The fuel management system we have right now is getting old. Basically, you get a cash register receipt report printout every month out of it. Jams up once in a while and beginning of this month, from the snow, it was a little wet, so it was a little hard to read. It's not up to code anymore with some of the safety features. So we just followed up on the proposal that Mike had gotten last year. And this would give us more ease of sorting the data from the fuel management. Like, I can't tell you how much fuel we use during a snowstorm, but with this, I'd be able to run reports that you know, could be more specialized. And it would send the information right to our computer at the Township Building instead of going onsite and printing out cash register tape to get any kind of reports for the fuel. So it would be a good upgrade to the system and if we had to move it for some reason or we needed new tanks, it would be usable in a different location or with new fuel tanks. So all the information's there and I'm hoping that we can get it approved.
Fred, question. Would that incorporate also the police cars that use that fuel tank?
Yes, so all the township vehicles would have a key just like they do now. When they put the key in to pump the fuel, that's recorded and we could keep track of mileage, miles per gallon, all kinds of different things with the fuel system.
So we can follow around the manager as for how far he goes for these special meetings. No comment there, I guess.
I hear you. Come on, come along with me.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Craig.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tessie.
So Fred, I I don't really know what this is, the system is about. Is this is this digging up a fuel tank from the ground and replacing it with all the accessory equipment included? Or I I don't exactly understand what this is.
No, no, it would just, the fuel tanks would stay. This is just new pumps, new electronics that keep track of the fuel that let you log in and get the fuel. Basically, it would, it's the pump section like at a gas station.
Okay.
That keeps track of the gallons that are coming out. You can, you know, track which car is using it, which driver is using it. Lots of different things, but the tanks are still fine and they're staying. So there is some electrical work that needs to be done, so we're not up to code with our safety shut-off switch and our breakers and different things. This would bring us all up to the current code, too.
Okay, how do we know the tanks are still good?
They're inspected. I don't know if it's annually or every five years, but they're inspected and like I said, if the tanks did happen to go bad, this management system wouldn't be bad. We could just switch it to new tanks if we ever needed them.
The the tanks are above ground, too, Tessie.
Oh, oh, I thought they were underground. Okay.
No, they're they're above ground and they're double walled for safety. So there's no, and there's actually a pan under them for any leakage. So there's no there's no visible defects with the tanks right now.
Okay, that that's great. I thought we were talking about underground tanks and I was wondering why the tanks were still good if the above system was not good. But, okay, I got it now. Thanks, Fred.
Okay, Fred, I'm not a fan of this one. I know Mike was working it before he left. Right, so I looked at the package. You got two costs here, right? You you have one-time costs and recurring costs. So the forty-six thousand dollars is really just startup cost. But now we have an ongoing cost that we have to, like that modem, we have to provide for, right? So so if we had a wire down there, we could just connect it to the internet. I mean, this is old school. When I look at this, this is old school. You're using a cellular modem to grab the data. We're paying sixty-five dollars a month for the for the modem. Not, I'm not a fan, right? So I understand the fuel management system that's out there is one that's been out there for a long time. So I want to send you back to the drawing board. We should be able to go online and and look at our fuel system anytime we want without dialing up a modem, without any of that recurring cost.
I think that's a great idea. I would love to be able to do that.
Right.
Certainly can can update the the proposal and I have to apologize. Like I said, I was just going off of what Mike had started, but I certainly can look into that and come back with a.
Yeah, that better, yeah. I I sent Mike back to the well many times, right? So.
Coming to the current century and
That's exactly what I wanted them to do. We just did it recently with Skedata and there's a few other systems out there. So I realize this is all tried and true and it works, but we need to look at that a little differently, right?
Okay.
Fred, I was gonna, I was gonna just add on, you have on here now available options, which is cloud hosting in addition to the cellular modem hosting. Do you have both costs on there? I don't know if you see it under on page five or under now available. So I wasn't sure, were you asking for both or were you asking us to pick?
I would.
Because you have the cloud hosting as an option and it's eighty dollars a month minimum with the fuel module, which is the hosting fee. But then you also have the cellular modem, which is a sixty-five dollar per month hosting. I was only going to ask that you separate the monthly and an occurring cost that we're going to have to continue to a lot for from the actual startup cost. a lot for, from the actual startup cost, but then there's that confusion which, you know, Mark kinda highlighted, you have two types of um
Yes, it's, it's one or the other, so um, but I could get the reoccurring costs broken down for the monthly and I'll confirm that we don't need the modem with the cloud hosting, which would be much better and more modern, for sure.
Well, we don't necessarily need the cloud solution either. There are a lot of vendors who are selling you a cloud solution, where all we're really doing here is grabbing the data off of the readers to determine how much we used, who used it, how much is left and there might be some order management software to automatically uh contact the vendor to say, hey, look, give us a delivery, but I don't think, I didn't see that in here, right? So, there's no inventory management system in this that I saw either.
No, this would not read the levels in the tank, it, it could total from a delivery and subtract out, I assume, but it doesn't read the actual fuel in the tank. There's never gauges on that.
Yeah, you could, well, you could, you could figure it out if you knew who, who was drawing when our last delivery was and you could figure back into what the tank levels are.
Yes, yeah.
You wouldn't need a reader on the tank, is what I'm telling you.
We inputted when we got a delivery and the amount, yes.
Right, so you, but we should be able to automate that too, is what I'm saying. So, I would ask that you go back to the drawing board on all of this and um, uh, and, and as well as breaking out recurring and non-recurring costs.
And the, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I was gonna say is that this, the date of this invoice is October ninth, two thousand twenty and at the bottom it says this amount is only good for thirty days, so we don't even know if this is an accurate current amount that we would need to pay.
Oh, that I did confirm, it's good until the end of this month, so, yeah. I'm sorry, it's still dated the old date, but I did check that to make sure it was still good before I forwarded it to you.
That's good, okay.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna table this, Fred, until you go back and do some homework.
No problem.
I have a que- I have a question for Fred on a non-related issue, but falls in his department, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Well, as long as we're done here, uh, we're gonna table this, you alright with the direction, Fred?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Brand, please proceed.
Uh, Fred, uh, first of all, I want to thank you and the crew for doing, as always, the great job that uh, our Public Works Department has done with snowstorms in Lower Guanit, we always get great comments on that. Uh, I ran into, uh, th- there's an intersection that I saw today that was a state road and it was um, a township road, Dager Road. And it was at, of the corner of a, a busy intersection, right around the corner from we're right at the corner of um, the Meadows and Bethlehem Pike and Dager. Uh, as major storms have it, a lot of times there's not finished work done for visibility purposes. Uh, do we have to notify uh the state or do we just mention it to you and have you take a look at certain intersections around the township where we think a follow-up um clearances could be improved?
Um, if you just let me know, we've had crews out the last two days doing work like that. Um, so if you see one that we missed or you think it needs to be done a little better, just let me know and we'll send our crew out, especially if you think it's a immediate safety concern with sightlines at an intersection, we'll just
Well, the one I'm, what I'm talking about, I'll let you know real quick, is Dager Road and Bethlehem Pike. If you're coming out of Dager Road and you're hanging a right to go south on Bethlehem Pike, it, it hasn't been pushed back further enough, so when you make that right, you have to lean to the left into the other lane for clearances, uh, the snow looks like it has to be pushed back further. There's no walkway there because it ends. So, that's the intersection as of now, but in the future, if I see others, Fred, I'll get in touch with it.
Yeah, please just let me know and we'll, we'll go out there and take care of that tomorrow.
Alright.
Yeah, he knows, he, you've got his number, Ed.
Yeah, shoot him a text, Dad.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up is public comments for things that weren't on the agenda. Is there anything uh, members of the audience would like to bring up?
I am not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
It looks like Nathan has
Can I jump in real quick? Thanks.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Yeah, thanks, I, um, yeah, I just wanted to mention um, that uh uh, I guess I wanted to mention this last time, but I couldn't stay long enough because I had to make an eight, but um um, I'm an avid runner in the township, uh, graduation, Whiskin High School ran on the cross country and track teams there. Um, I'd say probably over the past four or five years, I've run like at least a thousand miles on lower Gwinnett Trails. So, I guess first of all, appreciate you guys for um, you know, putting together trails and um also maintaining low taxes. I feel like it's a quite an achievement to be able to have those great um public services and um also have um, also like you just the response about it, so. Um, yeah, just wanted to first like say thank you to you guys for your hard work there. Um, so, one thing I've been concerned about recently is um Gwinnett Mercy University, like the campus has been closed due to COVID and um, it's like a super popular uh kind of spot for a lot of runners in uh my neighborhood, which is Gwinnett Knoll uh right near like Meeting House Road and Evans Road, um, so I could be able to cut through in order to access like a lower trail and trails. Um, cause there's not very many like lower Gwinnett kinda trails um close to where we live. And um because Gwinnett Mercy's been closed, a, a lot of people, myself included, have had to run on Meeting House Road instead. Um, and um, I guess it, it's a pretty thin road, like there's barely any shoulder. Um, the problem's been exacerbated recently because um of like the snow and like the plows can't um get the whole road, so I've been like taking up the whole lane kind of um running and it's a little bit risky because the cars go um back and forth on that road so fast, um, so um, I guess um, just wanted to um put this on, on your radar, um, like if there's any way to like make some sort of pedestrian improvements to Meeting House Road uh sometime like in the future. Um, like to make running on the road easier, uh, alternatively, I know like, takes a while to get this road stuff done, um, like I think once COVID is over, like hopefully Gwinnett Mercy opens up again, but um uh, like it's, the fact that Gwinnett Mercy is one of the largest landowners in the township, I think, um I guess, they have a lot of power in terms of like where um residents can and cannot go. And um, given that the uh university thing that like sold to the, some, selling a piece of their, under their seminary, I was thinking a, a potentially easier solution would be some sort of easement to ensure that like residents are able to um, kind of use those roads within Gwinnett Mercy to access um the other trail safely. That's uh
Nathan, you're not the only one who has requested that. And I've talked to uh management over there uh more than once about it and they are very much open to allowing uh residents and uh people like yourself to uh use the trail system. And we're gonna have some conversations uh upcoming uh because of their um interested in the seminary moving in to open up the campus. Uh, but right now, as you know, it's all locked down because of COVID. And, and you, you have to let the university administration decide what's best for them in these conditions, but yes, the, the idea would be to open up those trails. Now, the township trail between uh their two campuses there, where the waterfalls are and the dams, that's still open, but I'm asso- I'm assuming you knew that. Um, but o- other than that, uh, I understand your concerns, yes, it is on the agenda with uh Gwinnett Mercy.
Appreciate that and I'm glad that uh other people have also brought this up, so it's on your radar, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Craig?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to the manager's report, Mr. Manager.
Uh, just that the township will be closed on Monday for President's Day.
Well, that was pretty short.
Pretty sweet.
Okay, um, supervisor comments, let's start with you, Mr. Brand, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I'd just like to second my uh comments to the Public Works Department, as always, they just do a, a great job and we're always here, I always hear that since I've been involved for thirty-five years, uh, how, how great uh, the people that pass through, they notice when they're going from Whitpain over to Upper Dublin and they go through Lower Guanit and I, I just wanna second that. Uh, also uh with the staff um for working with the public under the uh pandemic. I know um, the availability is there, it's just that uh they have to announce themselves when they come in. Uh, but otherwise, I'm very pleased with everything so far.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Uh, Kathy?
Sure, uh, certainly concur everything that Mr. Brand said, um, especially as it relates to the Public Works performance during this uh, last week of snow and Fred, this was your first test as our new director of Public Works and you rose to the task as well as your um crew with flying colors. And I'd like to publicly thank Fireside Grill who uh donated a hearty hot lunch to the crew, Public Works Crew on Wednesday of last week, thank you Fireside.
Thank you, Kathy. Danielle?
I'd just like to echo the comments that every, my fellow supervisors have made. Um, and just commend the Public Works and the staff for, for working through the, the last few snowstorms. Um, and getting everything clear, because I think on Sunday, but more by the time I went outside it, you couldn't even have told, you wouldn't have known it snowed, so they did an excellent job. Um, and all the feedback that we got, some, you know, concerns, I think Fred addressed them immediately, so I appreciate all your feedback and your attention to detail.
Okay, thank you. Tessie?
Uh, yeah, so I, I also would like to echo the um congratulations to the, the team for doing such a great job removing the snow. And uh, I would just like to put back on our radar, because we have not talked about it in a while, uh, the idea that was raised some time ago about pursuing um a um maybe um RFA for somebody to do a um strategic plan for the township and um maybe the best time to do that is after we get our communications plan in place, but I, I don't want it to fall off our radar for much longer, I want to uh I want us to tackle that and uh execute on that plan. Um, Danielle did such a great job uh describing the possibilities that I, I would like to sort of nominate her to take the lead on that and uh make sure we can follow through.
Well, um, it has not been forgotten and uh my idea behind that, and I think we kind of all agreed, was uh the survey is out there, people have taken it uh already. We want to get the survey results back, get it tabulated and make sure we can incorporate that thinking into our strategic plan or a long-range plan, so. Uh, once that's done, I also expect Jamie, um, at some point, uh, we did a walkthrough with Tracer to see where they were on that software application we asked them to develop some time ago, so we can see how we can uh marry every, everything up. And then, we still have a lot of work to do after that, but we gotta get, we have to get the constituent parts complete, so Tessie, I agree with you, we, it is not forgotten. And uh Craig, do we know when the, the plan uh closes on the survey, the
Friday. Friday, that's what I was gonna say, February, or maybe it's Thursday, February twelfth.
That's Friday.
Friday.
That's supposed to be the last day to, to, I forgot, I totally forgot um to submit the survey, so please, please, if you haven't already, complete the survey.
Done.
And we have to give them some time to tabulate the results and then uh they will get back to us and uh after that, Jamie, we need to schedule a walkthrough uh of the software to see where we are on that. Uh, and make sure that serves our needs and then we have more work to do. But it's all, we have all, we have to get all the pieces together, so that's where we are. Um, Ed Brand, you said you've been here for thirty-five years, does that make you Casey's uh trainee?
I doubt that, but um, yeah, we go way back and uh very proud to uh be part of the team that brought McMahon to Lower Gwinnett Township. And uh, uh, Casey has uh has moved up in the uh, the company and I, I'm, I'm just honored that Lower Gwinnett had an opportunity to hear from him tonight. I mean, we're, we're talking about a senior executive with McMahon that, that covers a, a nationwide, that handles a nationwide company.
And well, you, you let him live in the township, right Ed?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad he's in the township, uh, it'll cut down on the speeding, I know through the
Oh, I don't know, our, our chief is uh on his call.
Yeah.
Way too kind and, and I've loved my five and a half years living in the township, it's been great. So, continue the good work.
It's been a number of years, Case, I said it's been a number of years we go back.
That's right, a few.
A couple of years. Um, Fred, I agree with whatever everybody else has said, you guys did a good job. Uh, things look pretty clean, uh, you know, when people go through our township, uh, we get kudos because our roads are plowed, not necessarily everybody else's, so that's, that's a good thing, that's what we want to keep up. Uh, as far as sending you back to the drawing board on that software, you can talk to Paul Kenny, our chief, I sent him back multiple times on, on software uh changes, so he might be able to give you some mentoring uh in that respect, but uh I'm, I'm expecting, you know, big things from this software upgrade, so let's, let's do this right. Um, thank you everybody for attending, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Night. Good night.